I'm going to begin.
All right, give me just a second for the system to catch up.
How many people are tuned in other than us? Can you tell that?
As soon as it finishes tallying, I'll let you know.
You're not going to run that printer, right?
At this point, there are 10 other people still climbing on. Hang on one second. Looks like there are 12 other people joined at this time. Good morning. Welcome to the April 16th Lebanon County Commissioners Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of public record. Anyone who would like to make a comment or ask a question, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app where at the bottom of your screen. Once the chair permits you to speak, your microphone be unmuted.
Thank you, Robert. Good morning. Welcome to the 41620 meeting of our Board of Commissioners. We will call the meeting to order and begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag as it's seen on your screen. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we proceed with our agenda, we, as is customary, will begin with public comment. Do you want to give the guideline for that?
Anybody wishing to make a comment, please do so by using the raise hand function. This time there are 12 people in attendance per team. And nobody has raised their hand at this time.
Okay. All right. We'll begin with the adoption of minutes of our previous meeting. Seek a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting as printed.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question, additions or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We will now move to Sally, our treasurer, for her report.
Okay, we had receipts on 414 and 15 of 1,948,543.62. That brought us to a cash balance of 5,094,038.5. Our expenditures this week were 1,541,624.69. There was no tax claim as of yesterday, and that leaves us a balance as 3,552,413.36.
I'll make a motion to adopt the treasurer's report.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So ordered. Thank you, Sally.
You're welcome. Jamie, are we going to do the resolutions for the bond payment?
Oh, yes. If you would walk through those April bond payments are due. Thank you, Sally. I didn't. But if you have the amounts there in front of you, go ahead and walk through them.
I do have the amounts. I don't have the official paperwork that we usually use. But the 2015 A-bond, we need approval to pay $31,685.25.
They will take the motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we make the bond payment as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the A-bond payment. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
The GLB bond for 2016, the amount due is 162,999.99.
I'll make a motion to pay the 2016 GLB bond.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve that payment. Any question or comment to go with that? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So ordered.
Okay, the 2017 GOB bond is $31,025 even.
Make a motion to pay the 2017 obligation bond.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved that general obligation bond payment. And any further comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, Sally.
Okay, we still have some more. We have a loan to Fulton Bank. That amount due is $50,854 even.
I'll make a motion to pay the loan to Fulton Bank.
Second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor to pay the payment, loan payment to Fulton Bank. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
Okay, there's, we have two others here that are through Wells Fargo. Our obligation number 18 to them is, the total due is 157,277.66.
Make a motion. Do you want to take the two together? Can we do that since they're the same? Same lender?
I think you can. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then the obligation number 26, the amount due on that one is $19,643.20.
I make a motion. Make a motion. I'm sorry, Sally.
It brings it to a total of $176,920.86.
All right, to make a motion that we pay the two Fulton Bank loans as read.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is seconded to pay those payments to Wells Fargo. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So ordered.
Okay, just for your information, that total payment overall was $453,395.10.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, we'll make, move on to our HR Human Resources Report from Michelle Aiders.
Good morning.
Good morning, Michelle.
Under resignations and terminations, I have Brandy Urban, full-time developmental assistant resignation effective April 13.
I'll make a motion to accept that resignation.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, I have Blair Beard promotion from caseworker one in children and youth to caseworker two at the rate of $1,312.66 effective April 20. I have Corey Earl, caseworker one, promotion at MHI DEI to caseworker two at the rate of $1,312.66 effective April 20. And Adina Smart promotion from caseworker two at MHI DEI to casework supervisor one at the rate of $1,685.27 effective May 4.
Make a motion to accept the promotions as presented.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion on the floor to accept those changes of status. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
Under other transactions, I have four hires at the prison, all full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of $15.45 per hour, all effective April 20. And those are William Bell, Richard Miller, Gaines Goddard, and Marshall Whitmer.
I'll make a motion to hire the four correctional officers at the prison.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to make those hires at the prison. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
I also have a motion to approve the emergency paid sick leave policy COVID-19 effective immediately.
I'll make a motion to accept the sick leave, the new sick leave policy for COVID.
And I'll second that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor to accept the emergency COVID-19 sick leave policy. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
And maybe, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to finish the motion. Opposed? Same sign. So moved. Okay, now.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps we should mention for the public that that expires the end of this year, December 31st.
Okay, I think you just did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Michael Wieland Jr., longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of $1,000 effective May 3. Timothy Fierro, longevity payment, private first class at the prison, one-time payment of $1,000 effective May 3. Dustin Gonzalez, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of $1,000 effective May 3. Daniel Donson, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $17.01 effective May 3. Timothy Heckman, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $17.01 effective May 3. And Linda Miller, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of $17.01 effective May 3.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept these salary board requests. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. Jamie, do you want to quarterback that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, we can just slip into election board first, and then Mike Anderson can go through the polling place changes that he has proposed and also maybe give just some updates on deadline dates and so on that have to do with the June 2 primary. So Ames would take that on, and then Mike can, we'll get Mike done with his part.
All right, I'd like to call the Board of Elections to order. Michael, go ahead.
Good morning, Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, voter registration. I'm here today asking approval for the final approval for the polling place changes that we proposed. I believe that was March. And those would affect the polling locations in the Lebanon First Ward Middle, moving to the Lebanon Church of the Brethren on Locust Street. Lebanon Sixth Ward, moving to the Lebanon Community Health Center. Bethel Mount Zion, moving to the Mount Zion Fire Company Social Hall, which is actually just one building over. And in South Anvil, moving from, moving to the Fontana Chapel on Fontana Avenue. We did have public comment. I did have two comments. I did share those with you via email, but I will just briefly go over them, which was, one was from Laura LeBeau for her talk show. She had somebody call in concerning the Lebanon Community Health Center, and it just was where we would actually be voting. And they thought maybe they had to go in, register back in rooms, and I explained to them that at that location, you actually just go into the entrance, we'll have signs, it's immediately to the right, and there's a meeting room right there. So there's no check-in, you don't go back with the patients, anything like that. It's basically lobby into the meeting room. And the other public comment we had had regards to from Patricia Stevens about the church that we selected, and she had a different church that she would have preferred us to go to. However, that church we actually did use as a polling place in the past, but they have a daycare there. And I explained to her, one of the reasons we were no longer there is because there was some issues or security concerns regarding using that church with the daycare and voting at the same time. So those were the two public comments that I had. And I request final approval to make those polling place changes.
All right, do I have a motion to make those polling place changes for Michael?
Make a motion to approve the four polling place changes.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to make those changes. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of making the polling place changes indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion that carries.
Hey, thank you very much. Just a couple of housekeeping, I guess, items, things to keep you up to date on. So as you know, mail-in ballot is all the rage, and we've been actually asking individuals to vote that way. And for the safety of not only themselves, but also when we get to June 2, which is Tuesday, June 2, 2020, is the new primary election date. That for safety concerns, less people, you know, giving people the option to vote by mail. We are now, at this point, we have just over 3,000 applications and ballots mailed. Just for reference, that is the total number that we had in the 2016 general election for president. We've already hit that number, and we are six weeks away from the election. So, and we have a lot more to process. We're getting applications daily. The Republican National Committee sent out a mailer to, I believe, super voters. We're getting a lot of those back, and obviously, the online has been very I guess what the word I want to say is, very popular with voters, going on to votespa.com and going through that application process. So we were getting a lot of requests that way. So my staff has been working very hard, doing a great job getting all of those out. We also set up a, thanks to the treasurer's office, talked to them yesterday, we are going to share the same box outside the municipal building for any individual that feel, instead of mailing their ballot back, if they want to drop it off, they can drop it off into that box. Made arrangements with the treasurer's office, and thank you, Sally, to you and your staff for that, along with the sheriff's office that will be checking that and getting those. Just felt like it was just better to use just one box instead of having multiple boxes out there, and the sheriff's deputies having to let people know where to drop what. We just felt we could just do that internally and have that take care of us. So we do have a box out there. It is marked, tax payments, and now ballots can go in that as well.
May I comment on that? Michael, there's a lot of people who are concerned about that, and how would you put their minds at ease that? I've heard you say, and of course, I know that the deputy sheriff said they're watching over it, and that box comes in every night. It's not out overnight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And there's also cameras on the deputies as well. So there's like triple checks in place. Is that correct?
Yes, and it is being checked every day by the treasurer's office. And we, we're going to also do our part to make sure we go down and get those ballots every night. But because they have it and they're checking it, they're also going to let us know when there's anything in there. But yes, it's very secure, chain of custody, everything like that. I will tell you, I prefer if they mail it personally, but it is an option for them. If they feel that they do want to drop it off here, they can do that.
Thank you.
Another point I wanted to make was just some deadline changes due to the, the primary changing to June 2. Now, the last day to register to vote is May 18. So I do want to let individuals to know that if they have not yet registered, they can do that. That's up to May 18. The last day to apply for a mail-in or a civilian absentee ballot is Tuesday, May 26, by 5 o'clock. However, please do not wait to May 26. If you know that's what you want to do, please do it sooner than later. With the sheer number that we have, we just want to make sure we have it, process it, and get that out to you, so you can get the ballot back to us. Because the voted ballot does need to be here by 8 o'clock on June 2. That is election day, but it has to be here. So no postmarks. We must have the voted ballot. So that is a change, obviously, with Act 77 that went into place last year. We do have more of time between the, the application deadline and when we can receive the ballots. But we just ask people to please not delay if they know or think that's the way they want to do that, to please go ahead and do that now.
Anything else, Michael?
I just want to let the board know that we have sent letters out. Because of our poll worker training being canceled, we have sent a letter to every poll worker, letting them know, obviously, the day changed, letting them, letting us know if something happens or they can't work. We've given them some instructions on notes because we're not going to have training. I'm not going to reschedule that, at least not in the capacity that we had it in the past, because it don't feel it, at this point, makes sense to bring, you know, 100 people into the auditorium. So, you know, we have, we have sent them all letters. We will be following up with them as we get probably in the beginning of May. Just kind of want everybody to be safe, stay home, you know, at this point, and then they will hear more from us as we get closer to the election. We also sent a letter, all the polling places, letting them know the change and to alert us at this point. If they feel that that date's going to be an issue, and then as, once again, we get into May, we'll be contacting them all individually. At this point, no place has told us we absolutely cannot use them, so that's good. However, we anticipate that's very possible. We not, we may not be able to be in all 60 precincts, and we have started plans in place for that. The Department of State has been working really hard about getting us precinct kits, so like masks, gloves, sanitizer, things like that. So that would be great if they're able to do that. And then I did talk to Bob doubt a little bit about, you know, what we may be able to supply here. As you know, trying to get some of this stuff just through the normal means is very difficult. A lot of stuff's just on backorder. So that's kind of where we are with that, just telling people to be patient with, you know, our poll workers and the polling places, and we'll know more as we get closer to the election day. And then also just letting voters know that if they are voting by mail, we have caught up pretty much with the backlog that we had, but just to be patient as far as if they have submitted an application. Don't get antsy. Don't think you have to submit another one, because we're getting a lot of duplicates, which slows us down. Your ballot should be out within the next week, week and a half at the latest, because we are pretty much have all of this processed and are able to start getting all those mailed out now.
All right, is that it? Anyone have any, anyone have any questions for Michael?
Just a reminder, for any attendees that have questions, use the raise hand function.
All right, evidently, there are no questions, so I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adjourn the Board of Elections. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Commissioner Ames. We'll now reconvene our regular meeting, and Jamie, it's back to you.
Okay, so I think the next logical thing on the agenda is to discuss and consider a resolution that was discussed at the last Commissioners' Meeting that would affect the deadlines for discount period on real estate tax payments, which is usually April 30, the deadline for a 2% discount for county taxes, and also the deadline for the flat period and when the penalty, 10% penalty would take effect, and that is typically the end of July. Nope, Sally?
July 1.
July 1. Thank you. And the proposal that you talked about last time for a resolution was to extend the discount period to June 30. And the penalty period would extend all the way, I'm sorry, the flat period would extend all the way to October 31, at which point the penalty period would then take effect. So several months of extension for that. At this point, if, maybe I just rely on Solicitor Warner and Sally if they have any additional comments. Dave drafted the resolution that was distributed to you all and was roughly based on something that Adams County had done with, with a few changes that Dave made. That's all right.
Do you mind, do you mind if we consider a motion first? And if there is a motion to go forward, then we can have the discussion.
That's, that's up to you. Sure.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to move forward with the resolution as, as presented by Attorney Warner.
Second the motion.
Okay, the motion's on the floor. And now, if you wouldn't mind commenting, Sally or David?
I can, just to briefly summarize again, the motion in short version indicates, obviously, the economic and pandemic challenges we're going through right now, and otherwise indicates that the late payment would be moved to October 31, 2020, and the discount payment should be extended to June 30, 2020. And at this time, we briefly discussed before, but this would only affect county taxes, the county property taxes. Each taxing entity or body would have to take a similar action and adopt whatever standard, whatever discount or penalty period they would want to put into effect, if any. Obviously, with the county serving as the tax collecting agent for many municipalities, it would be advantageous if those all aligned. But, but again, that would fall back to each municipality to make that individual determination.
Anything add, Sally?
Yeah, I think a lot of municipalities were waiting to make sure it got passed on the county level. And like I said, I already do have some in hand. Had an email this morning from Masstown Borough, and they're wondering if you passed it. I said, should happen today. So I hopefully will be okay with everything. But would be an issue if someone doesn't want to do it. I don't know how we would exactly handle that. But I guess we could probably work something out somehow.
All right, Commissioners, any comments before we vote?
Sure. I think that Dave summarized it very well in his resolution that the finances of our taxpayers are negatively affected because of closure of local businesses, layoff of employees, and also the financial market. So with all that in consideration, I think that there is a need for this resolution.
No.
I'm okay with it. I'm, I'm not so sure that it really helps people, because it's going to put off paying this tax about the time that the school tax comes out. But anyway, it is what it is, and I'm prepared to vote for it.
Right. The whole idea behind this was to help with relief for our taxpayers, and there may be some other opinions. We're hoping that the municipalities follow our lead. The assumption is that some relief is better than none, and that if we can extend that 10% penalty, so we don't add additional burden to folks that are already facing some hardships, I think that's a, a good thing to do. So if there's not any further discussion, I'd like to call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. So moved.
And that'll be resolution number 41620, just for the next item I would have to present to you is an intergovernmental agreement with Dauphin County. These are for the purposes of tax assessment on a property that straddles the county line, or more specifically, a building that straddles the county line. This was built both in Lebanon and Lebanon and Dauphin Counties. The portion in Lebanon County is in North Lennerdary Township, right off of Lingle Avenue. This was a newly constructed warehouse. It is part of the Hillwood Group and the occupant, from what I understand, is going to be Core Choice LLC. This this warehouse would provide 79 new jobs. The intergovernmental agreement, basically, in its essence, divides the tax collection by the square foot split over the county line. So it's about a, when you, when you calculate that, it's about a 55% to So it's about a, and when you, when you calculate that, it's about a 55% to Dauphin County and 45% to Lebanon County. It also sets out that the assessment duties of the property would fall to Dauphin County. So any maintenance of the assessment or any appeals that would be filed would be held, heard by Dauphin County. Solicitor Warner and our Chief Assessor, Dan Seaman, have worked on this with Dauphin County. And Dave's been over and over it, and and I believe is recommending your approval on this. Dave, would you have anything to add?
Yeah, that's correct, and Dan Seaman or his folks in the Assessment Office verified the percentage division, and they're satisfied with that. And again, it kind of just falls back to one of the two counties has to serve as the primary county, or it's just significantly more efficient to do so. And with Dauphin County having the slightly larger percentage of the property, of the actual building, I should say, which makes up obviously the larger portion of the tax base here, they are the default one to serve as the Assessment Office for the property.
Question. Is there an assessment value placed on this property at this point?
I, there must be a value on it, but I'm not sure if the new construction is complete yet. I believe a new assessed value would be set after the construction project is completed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to adopt the recommendation as presented by the Solicitor.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, a second to accept the division of that property on the county line for assessment purposes and other purposes, and the additional comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so, or thank you.
Okay, the next item I would have to present to you is a request for a hotel tax slash tourism grant. You each, I believe, had an opportunity to look over the, look over the proposal. This is a, a new request. It is time sensitive since it is directly related to COVID-19. And as you know, this was something that that was originally proposed by, by Larry Bowman, who is the former President of the Lebanon Valley Chamber of Commerce, and would be working with Lebanon Family Health Services on a, on a concept to utilize some of the tourism funding to purchase food from local restaurants as many as possible, and then distribute that, those meals to local healthcare agencies, first responders, any, anyone on the front line essentially, to the best of their ability. You've all, again, you've all had a chance to read it. If, if you feel it's worthwhile, Mr. Chairman, I can, I can read the pertinent parts of the, of the application.
Sure.
All right. So this grant would be utilizing an allocation of room tax revenues from the Lebanon County Commissioners to fund an initiative aimed at supporting and providing a morale boost to frontline medical and other healthcare personnel in the county who are helping to pull Lebanon County and its residents through the current coronavirus crisis. The initiative would, would at the same time be aimed at helping to support the county's restaurant industry, which is an important part of our tourism sector that has been very hard hit by the closures and severely curtailed operations. The focus would be to demonstrate the community's support and appreciation for the efforts of the medical, nursing home, and medical transport professionals during this challenging period by purchasing and delivering to those medical and nursing home facilities and offices easily packaged individual meals for their staffs. The meals would be purchased from as many Lebanon County restaurants and delis as possible to have the staff and resources available to prepare the quantity and quality of sandwiches and meals needed. They would like to launch this initiative as soon as possible and are prepared to begin identifying which facilities and offices are willing to have meals delivered and which restaurants and delis are willing and able to meet the food requirements. They would also plan to contact organizational partners who may be able to assist in providing volunteer services for this effort, as well as an organizational entity willing to receive the funding and pay for the meals purchased from the participating restaurants. A moment ago, that would be Lebanon Family Health Services, as evidently stepped up. The, the initiative was first brought up, I guess, or first thought of when Mr. Bowman had a conversation with Mike Coon from Wellspan Good Samaritan Hospital and Kim Kreider-Umbel from Lebanon Family Health Services. Both Mike and Kim mentioned individuals brought small quantities of meals to the staffs over the last week or so, and that these were not only greatly appreciated, but had an uplifting effect on the staff's morale. Any such organized efforts to provide meals for the staff of Good Samaritan and other facilities would undoubtedly provide a huge morale boost to these frontline medical and healthcare workers. He would keep all of the documentation, documentation for any funds expended and hope that the Commissioners will see the potential benefit of initiative for the county's frontline medical workers and as well as the restaurant industry.
Um, I'd like to, what I heard you say in the beginning was what I was hoping for, and then when it was read, it had a slightly different tone. Frontline workers, to me, would include people like our 911 telecommunicators and our COs down at the prison, as well as Renova Center. And the way it, it's worded in the letter, I don't think it includes them. Could we amend it to include those particular people?
Yeah, I suppose you could. The, yeah, of course you could. Medical, nursing home facilities, offices, frontline medical, other healthcare. Yeah, I, I'm not sure if, you know, how broadly they're willing and able, but you could certainly make that known, and and that could be part of the, the award, the language in the award.
I would make a motion to include them and adopt the letter that we received for the grant request. I understand we'd have to waive the match, though, because I had suggested perhaps asking the public to make a donation and matching that. But Larry said he didn't think that they would be able to track all that. So I guess it stands as it was presented, except for
As far as the match goes, in, in other grants in the past, you have allowed in some instances for the in-kind effort, the value of the effort, if you were to attach a, a price or a cost to the, to the time of the, for example, Lebanon Family Health Services and others putting into this. Not, not that you're compensating for that time, but the value of it basically could, could stand as an in-kind match toward the amount. And, you know, as far as the amount goes, I think initially, Mr. Bowman was requesting $10,000. In speaking with each of you, there's some thought, I guess, of possibly increasing that number to be able to just get this as far and wide as possible.
I think that was because we thought if there was a match, we could take $10,000 and multiply it to $50,000 if we put up, up to $25,000. But that's not what they were looking to do, and I, that might extend the period too long. So I thought that he just wanted the proposal as he sent it in for the $10,000.
Oh, I was, I was inclined to make it 25, as was suggested the other day. I think that, and if they don't use it, they don't use it. Though, obviously, it would be re, be returned to the fund. So if you would include that amount in your motion, that would make
So this would be on a reimbursement basis? They wouldn't get the money all upfront? Or would we release a piece meal?
In my thinking, we would have it available. They may want availability of some of it to use, but I'm sure they'll work that out with the restaurants. I have total confidence in people like Larry Bowman and Kim Kreider-Umbel, and they've also reached out to Brooke Smith with the United Way. So we have folks that are professionals in, in the field of public service and service agencies. So I think we should put our confidence in them.
I agree.
What needs to be done.
Is, is the Chamber of Commerce involved in this as well? I haven't heard any confirmation on that.
Not, not to my knowledge. I, I think, you know, they're, they're going to, they're going to reach to anyone that's willing and able to help to get this done, do the best job. But you know, the, the funding is going to the Family Health Services because they're, they're the nonprofit that can accept the grant.
Okay. Well, um,
Let's put a motion on the floor and see what happens.
Yeah, I already did make a motion. He's asking me to amend my motion to up the ante from $10,000 to $25,000. And so I, I guess if, if that's not overwhelming for them, if they still only want to $10,000, then I think that's what we should do. But we can at least have the option to go up to $25,000. That would be my amendment.
I'm comfortable with that. I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So it's up to fif, up to $25,000. But we're going to cut a check for the 25, and then if they don't use it, they'll reimburse us? Is that, so they'll have the money available to them? Okay, that's the understanding. All, any other comment?
I just, is that allowed? Is, would we be violating any tourism grant protocol from the state? Can we do that if we don't have receipts? Isn't it normally reimbursable? So should we do smaller amounts, like $10,000 at a time?
I'm going to leave that entirely up to the Board. I mean, it, it has nothing to do with any of the state, the state law, as you, as you mentioned. That's very, very broadly written to allow counties discretion.
Okay. I wanted to make sure we didn't get in the pickle.
Yeah, really. I, I think we want to make this as simple as possible for Larry and the folks that are going to be working on this. So I would, might be inclined to give them the 25, and if they don't use it all, entrust them to return that money to our tourism fund.
And I, I have been assured that they will keep perfect records, also records of the hours, the time spent, so that, you know, it's, we don't have to measure that. They will provide us with that as well at the end of the project, so.
Yeah, the record keeping end of it, as far as expenditure, should be pretty straightforward. I mean, every restaurant's going to issue a receipt, and that's, you know, they're just going to all be tallied up.
All right. Well, I think it would be coming at a time that is sorely needed for the restaurants to stay in business and make it through this critical time. So we have the motion on the floor.
We have a motion, a second. The end of discussion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Okay, and Treasurer Newen, is that something we can turn around in conjunction with the Controller's Office?
I actually do have, normally those checks would go through our payables, which could possibly go with payroll this week, but I also have, or this coming week. But I do have a checkbook for that account, so I mean, we could do a check directly to them. I'm assuming we just have to make sure we record it properly then.
Okay, we'll, we'll work directly with, with Larry and Kim and get that done as soon as we can, so they can get going as soon as they can.
Excellent. Very good.
I guess, if I could comment, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly, go ahead.
I, I just think it's seldom that we have the opportunity to, the, I guess, the popular saying is kill two birds with one stone. Here, we're meeting a need and rewarding, if you will, the folks that are out there working against this virus every day, and also to help our restaurants, which are obviously key to tourism. We're, we're doing this at a time when other things in tourism are, you know, would not make much sense to spend money to advertise and things like that, or to promote events that can't be held. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity to utilize some of that money and as, as we've already said, to help restaurants stay in business because we want them to be there when this, when this whole thing is over. So I, I appreciate the Board agreeing to do this, and I'm, I'm very glad that, that Larry initially brought the idea to us.
Okay, Jamie?
Yes, the last item I have for you for action is a, a crash data agreement with
Did we finish that vote?
Yes.
Yes. The, so it's a crash data agreement with PENDOT. This is something we do annually. It enables our Metropolitan Planning Organization employees in the planning department to access crash data to do planning for transportation projects, intersection data, things like that. So there, PENDOT always asks that we, that we approve an annual agreement to be able to access that data. It's just mostly about privacy issues.
I do have a question for our Solicitor, if I may. Um, page seven talks about the state having sovereign immunity against lawsuits from the county and, and reimbursement, should they infect us, basically. But on page 2D, it says that the county is liable to the state, should we infect their software? Don't we have sovereign immunity as well?
Right, so in, in general, the county does have sovereign immunity. There's certain exceptions to that. When entering into like a vendor contract agreement, we hypothetically could still have contractual liability for that. So the state, you know, like, like any person or party who drafts a contract, they draft it in a way that is most favorable to them, and that we, as the participant customer in some ways, bears some liability or responsibility. So we, we do not have absolute sovereign immunity. In contractual cases, we do still have the potential for liability for a breach of contract scenario.
But shouldn't it be equal that if we're being asked to pay for them, they should pay for us?
If the state would agree to that, that would be great for us. My, my very reasonable guess is that's not going to happen.
Okay. Jamie?
That's all, just to your motion.
Is John Fitzkey and Song Kim the two that would have access, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll seek a motion to approve the access, crash data access.
I'll make
A motion.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion, but I would reach out to the state and ask them to consider that we both have sovereign immunity and should be treated equally.
Well, do you mind, should we do two separate motions?
I'm just making the motion to adopt it, but also at the same time, making a statement that I believe we both have sovereign immunity, and we should both be recognized and held as equal partners.
So that's not part of your motion? That's just
No, just my comment.
Okay, well, then I'll second the motion to enter into the agreement.
All right, very good. If nothing else, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, the last item, I think originally was intended for, for action on your part, but has evolved over the last couple of days. And that's the, the offer for providing data on coronavirus positive results from the Defense Department of Health. There's, there's a lot of interest and intrigue over that data to be provided at, at various different levels. The Department of Health on Saturday, the Secretary of Department of Health sent a letter to all counties saying that the data for positive cases could be provided to counties exclusively for the use of the 911 center in warning or, or informing responding ambulances and police that a case, a positive case has existed at their, at the address that they're responding. And I'll, I'll only go so far with this and leave Director Dowd and Solicitor Warner to maybe shed a little more light on it. But, you know, there's, there are some controversy over it by other counties. Other counties are saying, you know, it's not very useful, and so the And so the non-disclosure agreement that the state is requiring each county to sign has some liability for the counties in it. And maybe it's not worth the liability for the data to be provided because first responders are already taking those precautions at every call. And whether or not there's a positive case at the address they're responding to, does that really make a difference? So that's just sort of to tee it up a little bit. I think initially it just looked like this was a no-brainer for everybody to sign on with, but it's evolved a little bit and maybe used as some leverage to try to gain a little more data from the Department of Health. So I don't know who wants to take it from there.
Yeah, I would agree. The short summary and takeaway there is we do not believe the potential value of the data that the state could provide us is greater than, or has more value to us as a county and as first responders than the potential punishments and damages and liabilities that we would take on by accepting this data. And then frankly, by using it, by distributing it out to the people and first responders who need the information. Just that distribution by itself, potentially, one could argue, opens us up to liability. So, and again, this is an opinion that is shared by solicitors across the state, by emergency management officials across the state, Bob Dowd's peers. So it really seems like something that needs revision and needs to be changed. And our county association is working on doing that right now. So again, in short version, without going into every single detail of the agreement, it does not appear like there's a significant value. And it does appear like there is a great risk of liability potential to the county. So at this time, it's our recommendation not to take action on it.
Thank you.
Director Dowd, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I, looking over the guidelines and how we're supposed to disseminate this data and some of the requirements, I don't know that we can meet these requirements adequately to avoid being penalized. And, you know, the damages are significant. If we were, for each case, it's, you know, $5,000 fine. It could revoke 911 funding, the list goes on. So I think that there needs to be a revision of how this data is disseminated before we accept it. How the status is able to disseminate it.
All right, is there any?
No, I opposed this from the first time I read it. Not only the liability issue, but just the mere fact that the state would pressure us essentially to sign an agreement like this, which, as has been indicated, is almost impossible to uphold. And I took the liberty to call Jeffrey Boyle, who was the signer of that letter, to tell him that I didn't think, because as was indicated, our first responders are prepared to meet these needs in every case. And they wouldn't necessarily have to have a significant warning that this might be a coronavirus incident that they're responding to. But that we weren't, I think the public is entitled to information of how many of the the positives were, from what municipalities do these come? I think that's general knowledge that the residents of county, not just our county, every county is entitled to. Because that allows you to make decisions about your own health and safety in our overall community. So I encouraged him to do that. He indicated to me that he agreed with me, thought that that was so. And that that information might be forthcoming in the next few days. So I think that would be far more valuable. And to me, I'm personally insulted by the fact that the state, the administration takes the cavalier attitude that they do on many of these issues related to this virus and this pandemic. So it doesn't give me a warm fuzzy feeling. You know, the legislature took action in the last two days to make, move forward with opening up the economy. And it seems like in retribution, there's a letter from the Secretary of Health indicating that, oh, we're going to add more onus to the small business owners, those that are open. So, and I begin to wonder whether it's the governor that's really running the state, or whether it's Rachel Levine. So I don't have a real warm fuzzy feeling about what's happening.
Wow, I do have some comments. I think that when we look at this, the recommendation from our solicitor is spot on. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank Bob Dowd and his staff and our GIS staff for creating a map on their webpage that shows us exactly where the deaths have occurred. And I understand there were three. One was in Swetara, Bethel, and Lebanon City. And so if indeed that information Commissioner Ames was talking about is forthcoming, that we have where the 300 and some odd people have been infected, then that could be added to those layers, perhaps in a different color. But I find it very useful, again, in making personal decisions. And I want to commend Bob Dowd and Cherie Prentice-Brown and Jamie Wolgemuth for working together to make that happen. Thank you.
Dr. Yocum.
Oh, yeah. Going to make, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Yocum is the one who provided us that data and allowed us to release it.
Thank you.
Sounds like the pleasure of the board is that we don't let, fine tune it more and bring it back for another look at this point. Is that the pleasure of the board?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make one more comment, it's worth noting just that there's an understanding of what this data is. It's not a complete data set. It never will be. The state has been encouraging people, if you're sick, to stay home. And because of that, there are plenty of people who have probably had coronavirus or have it currently and are doing just that, staying home. Because of that, they're not going to show up in any of these databases, and that's okay. But putting this out there as some sort of complete set is very inaccurate. And I think that in itself.
It's a pattern.
It certainly can do statistical, yes, analysis. You can do that with it. But it's, the intent of the data is only to notify first responders in the form that was put out, and it is not a complete data set for that reason.
Correct. All right. Jamie, do you have anything else? Or we want to have some comment from Bob Dowd, just to, any updates that you might have for us, Bob?
Yeah, I thought that would start with Bob, and I can give a few other, you know, updates on some of our 24/7 operations and so on.
Okay, excellent.
Currently, our EOC is still maintaining level three activation.
Do you want to just mention what that is for the public?
Sure, level three activation, there are several different tiers. Level four being daily operations, business as usual. Level three being the EOC is officially activated, and we have resources dedicated specifically to our needs.
The letters mean what?
Level, sorry.
EOC.
Oh, gotcha. Now I'm tracking. Emergency Operations Center. Yeah, I apologize. I live in a world of acronyms, and I forget that. Yeah, so our Emergency Operations Center, which is the focal point for the county to manage any major situation. It's what the EOC's job is. The EOC is currently focused on collecting, consolidating, and then disseminating information. One of the big problems that we're seeing, especially from the state, is just a fragmented blast of information coming from multiple different state entities. And we're trying very hard to get that into something short and meaningful that we then disseminate out to our stakeholders in the community, being first responders and healthcare facilities. Another thing that we're working on is PPE supply requests that continues. We're currently supporting first responders and healthcare workers first and foremost. We're also working with some long-term care facilities on a case-by-case basis. Part of what we're doing is helping educate how to conserve, reuse, and then make sure everybody has current guidelines on how PPE should be used, just to make it last, because the shortages at this point are not going away. Yesterday, the governor ordered, or greatly expanded, the required mask order. That now includes all essential staff. I'm sure that's going to expand our PPE distribution model in some way. I'm not entirely sure what that's going to look like at this point, but it's definitely going to change things. Our 911 center continues to see very, very low call volume, no significant trends of any kind that we're seeing. I know some counties are reporting higher sick person type calls, but we have not seen any significant trends. Our PPE donations are continuing. It's been excellent. We've received a considerable amount of PPE. And one of the most important things for us at this point is masks. We have a lot of gloves. We're in pretty good shape there. But masks are the top, especially commercially-made masks. And then cleaning supplies are also very, very useful. Just, yes.
You said especially the commercially-made. Are you now accepting non-commercially-made masks?
We're not, and I should have clarified that because the masks that we're using, we're rolling out with specific guidance. We're only accepting commercially-made masks. But there is lots of use for those homemade masks. When you consider the intent of the everybody wear a mask order that came out last week, it's basically to stop you from spreading it. You know, it's not, you're not protecting yourself from other people as much as you are protecting other people from you. And even something as simple as pulling your shirt up over your face if you're near somebody achieves that. So those homemade masks are excellent for that. We're not distributing those because we're working directly with the first responders at this point, and we're trying to get them the equipment they need when they're dealing with COVID-positive patients, which is a different set of equipment. And just to close it up with a set of numbers, currently there are 349 cases confirmed in Lebanon County. The testing is starting to come back a little bit quicker, we're being told. However, there's still a significant delay from the time the state gets that to the time it gets released. We get it at the same time the state gets it, or the state releases it. Currently, three deaths being tracked. Commissioner, let's talk about that for a little bit. Our numbers are going to be a little bit different than the state's. The state is tracking two currently. And as far as I understand, that's, once again, just the delay in their system. Once it gets through all the proper channels, then the state's numbers will be the same as ours. An important note on the map, the public map that's currently available on our website, it does show deaths. It puts a dot in the municipalities. That dot just indicates the municipality of deceased, does not indicate the actual physical location. And that's all I have.
Okay, Robert, thank you. And how are the staffing levels in the 911 center?
Good. We're not seeing any significant changes based on COVID at this point. But we are still monitoring everybody coming into the building before every shift.
All right, very good. Thank you. And Jamie, I'll go back to you.
Yeah, I'll just give some updates on the courthouse department and some of the social services and outside departments. The sheriff's office is maintaining a presence at the courthouse, and they are at the rear entrance to the courthouse just to field any requests that might come to the door. The building is closed to the public. However, there are some emergency court proceedings that have been taking place over the last couple of weeks that require people to be present for a hearing, and so the sheriff's office is handling that and deliveries to the building. And it's just, it's really worked out well to have just a minimal presence of the sheriff's department there. The treasurer's office, as you can tell from the treasurer's report, is utilizing some of their staff, you know, one or two at a time to process real estate tax receipts and getting those deposits in. And as I say, that was on, you could see that from the treasurer's report this morning. Other row offices on the first floor are also maintaining a presence and doing what they need to do just to keep things going, so that there isn't a backlog and/or any sort of, you know, overwhelming catch-up to do once the building is back open again. Voter is processing lots of absentee ballots. Mike talked about that. I was glad to hear that they've caught up with the mail. So they're current in that regard. But as everyone, I think, expects, there's still going to be an avalanche of absentee mailed-in ballots. The courts, as mentioned a minute ago, they are doing some hearings. They have done some central court proceedings, but those are all being done by video. But if someone has a protection from abuse filing, a request to file for order for protection of abuse or an emergency custody hearing, for example, those are things that the court is required to act on immediately or within a defined period of time. So they are maintaining a small presence there to do those sorts of things. Children and youth upstairs on the fourth floor, along with the other social services such as aging, mental health, cap, drug and alcohol, and so on, are all keeping pace with the protective services. They're responding to everything. To my knowledge, they've not, you know, they've not had any gaps in that, or where things may have fallen through the cracks. They've got calls forwarding. We were able to distribute some additional laptops that have remote access for some of those caseworkers to be able to sign into the state portal and keep up with the data input that's required for their cases. So all of that seems to be going reasonably well. A few hiccups on the rollout of those laptops. But we'll deal with those. And at the jail, they are significantly down in population. I think the last number I heard yesterday was 315 inmates. To give you some comparison, that was about 443 back in January and has gone down significantly, mostly due to the fact that the inmates are simply reaching their release date, their scheduled release date. And, you know, they're obviously being released as required. But with everyone in the stay-at-home and just in general things slowing down, there are, there just aren't that many intakes taking place. And in some cases, the court has worked very closely with the jail to possibly adjust the bail on a case that might otherwise make it to, where our defendant might make it to intake. But the courts are giving a little more leeway in that regard to avoid quarantine or avoid people from the outside coming in who you just don't know until they're quarantined. They have isolated half of one of the blocks for a quarantine area. And Prime Care Medical Department, Prime Care Medical Company, who is our provider there, monitors those quarantines, and typically they're 14 days. But it is entirely up to the medical department to determine when it's time that person is deemed safe to go into the general population. And there's no intermingling going on. They are maintaining minimal traffic in the hallways. Mingling, I mean, between the quarantine and the general population. So things seem to be going pretty well at the prison. Prime Care Medical, I will give a real pat on the back. They have done some real good work in terms of anticipating precautions, implementing well-reasoned cautions, precautions, and so on, both for the staff and for the inmates. So we currently stand with no cases at the jail. Some other counties and obviously state correctional facilities you've heard about do have some cases. And once they get the cases, unfortunately, it does spread around. So we've been fortunate there, and I think some of the good work with the staff and prime pool have done.
Jamie, question on that.
Yeah.
How many people are in quarantine at the prison, at the jail?
I don't think we have any right now, but I could be mistaken. But if there are, it's, you know, one or two, because, yeah. And those would be new intakes. There were, and I had a question from the press earlier, I think last week, how many tests have been administered, and it's a handful. It's less than five, the number of COVID tests that were administered, and they all came back negative.
Thank you.
Yep. Also, Renova Center right now is maintaining operations well. There are no cases to be had there, neither with staff or the residents of Renova. And as you know, that's a very vulnerable population, you know, something that might impact, you know, someone who's generally in good health. And would not affect that person too much can severely affect some of the residents of Renova Centers, and being very cautious there. And same with Central Booking, and you heard about the 911 center. Central Booking's still functioning and taking all the precautions. And they've been provided some PPE from Bob Dowd's office. they've been provided some PPE from, from Bob Dowd's office. And that's about the updates I have. Thank you.
Anything else, Jamie, for the good? Or we'll have some finishing comments, I guess. But is there anything from your point of view, agenda wise? We good?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any comments, commissioners, before we adjourn?
I'd like to thank everyone for being so cooperative out there in the community. People are working together. They're helping each other. They're being patient. And that's so essential. So we can get through this together and we will get through it. And I'd also like to thank our staff who are adjusting and just working from home and, and doing what they have to do to make sure that our, our people in Lebanon County are served, especially those caseworkers and children and youth and the area agency and aging and mental health and also drug and alcohol. Your work goes unseen, but you are appreciated. And of course, those that run 24/7, the prison, Renova Center, and the 911 center, outstanding work. Thank you all.
Commissioner Ames?
Well, without repeating all the things that Commissioner Litt said, I just want to say that the folks that work for us here at the county make me proud every day. We, it's just really heartwarming to see the attitudes and the work ethic that prevails here at the county. And just to reassure the residents out there that, that their needs are being served by county government.
Thank you. And at the risk of a three-peat, I will echo what you folks have said. And seriously, the, the spirit of cooperation across the departments in, in the county is very inspiring. And, and also, when you get out in the community, people are really trying to pull together. So we are staying apart but working together. And that's about as good as we can do at this time. Thank you all. If we have nothing further, I'd like to move for adjournment.
Do you have any questions from those listening in, Bob?
Hope there are still 13 people on the call. No raised hands at this time.
All right, then I'll move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you all. And stay well.
We don't have a executive session after this, correct?
11:30. Just kidding.
I got it.
I don't have anything scheduled there.
Just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you, Commissioner, for protecting me this time. Thank you.